One at a time.
You're live.
Good evening. We're going to go ahead and open our special called meeting tonight. Well, Mr. Wilson, we're so glad to have you back with us in person. He's going to lead us in the pledge and then Ms. Carpenter is going to pray for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today grateful for our students being back in the schools, grateful for our teachers being back in the schools, teaching our students, grateful for the administration, everyone involved in our district. We continue to pray for everyone's health and well-being and we ask that you be with all of us during this meeting and continue to be with our school staff and students as they remain in school during this time. We also pray for the leaders in our country. We pray for all those who are hurting in our country and ask that you bring peace to all of us. All these things we ask in our name. Amen.
Good evening. We're in a little bit of a different location tonight because we've had some air conditioning issues at the central office and they're being addressed. So sometime we'll be back there again. But tonight we want to start with a video that will show everyone, especially our board, how our year has started. It's about three minutes long, so enjoy. You may see some faces that you know. Back to school. I asked Brandon to be kind of in charge of the procedures and the health pieces of this. And I did that on purpose, Brandon, because I know of your ability to read and understand things. So if you would just take us through some of the procedures, some of the processes that we're following, and maybe how they helped us with this particular issue last week.
So first, we have screening procedures in place. Each school has a different routine for parent pickup, for bus drivers, and then at the high school for car drivers. And they have a location that they enter the building and their temperature is taken and they're asked three questions. I'm sure many of you have experienced that now if you've brought your kids to school before they never enter our building. And once they are in our building, we've got signs all over the place and markings on the floor indicating six-foot spacing, really talking about maintaining our social distance in classrooms and in the hallway. Teachers have worked hard to set their desk six or more feet away. So while they're in the classroom, they can social distance. And then also, you know, we've got the mask requirements that we've been set forth to enforce. And all schools have policies and procedures in place allowing for mask breaks as appropriate. You know, one of the other important pieces to this is our partnership with the Health Department and our presumptive cases guidelines that outlines particular incidents. If a student screens positive or if a student starts running a temperature or if a student is diagnosed with COVID outside of school hours, we have a handbook. It's digital for all the schools and it outlines step by step how to respond to those incidents. And one of the first things it does requires that we communicate with the Health Department. And they've been a great partner and have been quick to respond with us and help create some of this to protect our kids. You know, we're really dedicated and our main goal is to keep our buildings open for as much face-to-face instruction as possible. And following these guidelines will help us remain open as long as possible.
Hi, Katie.
Can everybody talk?
Hi, Katie.
Let's see. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Katie.
I think we can safely say tonight we're social distancing.
I think we're. We've done great job with that.
Ms. Burns, I would recommend that the board approve the agenda for this special called meeting on August 31st, 2020.
Does any member have anything that they want to add to the agenda before we approve them? So if not, if I have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Someone.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
We've already seen the video opening and I would encourage all of you, if you want to visit our schools at any time, just to call the principal and they would be happy to take you through. You didn't see anything on that video that isn't happening every minute, every day. Our policies and procedures are pretty consistent. We're always making sure that we're staying on top of what the Health and Human Service Department has for us to do. The purpose of this meeting originally... The purpose of this meeting originally was to bring an update to you all on how the schools are doing and particularly in light of the fact that we're on Plan B with some remote learning. So I've asked Allison if she would come and once again lead us through where we are as a county. So Allison, would you come and share some information with us?
I feel like I need to step. Okay. In front of you is the handout I gave each one of you. I think you have it in front of you. This is the format that I've been going with for the past month or so. In the United States, there's roughly 84 million tests have been completed. 7.2 million have been positive. 182,000, 182,622 deaths. The positive rate for the United States is 8.6% currently. It was 9% on August the 12th and 9.5% on August the 2nd. So that is going down. Case fatality is 2.5%. It was 2.6% and 3.10%. So that's going down as well. In North Carolina, roughly 2.2 million tests have been completed, 167,000 positive tests, 2,702 deaths. Right now, there's 923 hospitalized. With a positive overall rate of 7.4%, was 7.6%. So that's gone down slightly. Case fatality has stayed the same at 1.6% for North Carolina. For Swain County, we've tested roughly 3,728 people. There are 46 pending tests, 3,553 negative. There's 129 positives. Currently, we have six active cases. That means there are six individuals who have tested positive and they are in their 10-day quarantine isolation period. So we only have six in that period right now. Three deaths. Our overall positive rate is 3.5%. Case fatality is 2.3%. It did go up with that third death that occurred with that. When you look at Swain County, or when you look at Swain County, there are approximately 14,000 permanent residents in Swain County. So we've tested roughly a fourth of those individuals. So when you think of that, 14,000 is our, you know, residents, the whole community population. Only 129 of those have tested positive since March over a six-month period. So I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that, that it's not 129 today or last week. It's over six months is 129. The six that we currently have active, four of them have been symptomatic. They did have, one had a fever, the other three had various coughs, things of that nature. So they went and got tested and they were positive. Two were contacts of positives. Four of them, four of them were ages 50 to 64. Two of them were 25 to 49. We are posting all of our information on Mondays and Thursdays. That goes on our Facebook page as well as the Swain County website. With that, we have our numbers and then the two graphs that I have given you as well. Breaks it down by age and then just the line graph of the total number of tests reported and the number of positive tests. Do you have any questions on any of that information? When you look at the cases by age, the 25 to 49-year-olds represents about 40% of the cases.
And that's kind of standard now.
It is very standard. In North Carolina, it's 42% of that age range. Ages zero to 17 in Swain County is about 12% of those 129 that are positive. On the back of the first page is just some information about the other counties, about how many tests they've completed, active cases, deaths, such as that, for you to look over as comparison. Again, Swain County is at 3.5% positive rate. Jackson's at five. Macon County, 11. Cherokee County, 7.8. Graham County, 2.8. Clay County, 11%. The second page is a graph. It's information from the NCDHHS website. I pulled it directly this afternoon. On the front page, if you look down at the bottom, this is by cases. So it breaks it down by the age that I was talking about. So ages 25 to 49 is at 42%. Hours is right at 40%. So we're right on trend with that. Just like with the zero to 17 age group, the state's at 11%. We're at 12%. On the back page is the same information, but it is in metrics of death. So you can see, even though ages 25 to 49 on the first page, on the first side, was 42%. Death rate is 75 and older at 57%. And from zero to 17 is 0% for North Carolina. Other information that people have asked me in the past about ventilators. In the state, there are 200, excuse me, 2,352 ventilators. Only 899 are currently in use and that's reported by the hospitals. Questions? Comments?
Very nice to see it in this format.
Okay, this works for you?
Yeah.
Perfect.
And thank you for explaining so nicely the way you do.
The school has been great to work with, especially the nurses at each of the schools. If they have questions, they contact us. If they're concerned about something, they contact us. If we hear something, we contact them. It's been a great relationship.
Good. That's awesome. That's the way we...
We have no worries there.
Great. That's very reassuring. Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Thank you for everything you all are doing.
Thanks, Allison. So much.
Everybody's overworked these days.
There's a lot of work that's going on.
There's a lot of work that's going on, absolutely.
As far as the school system is concerned with current information, I've been in touch with you about a couple of issues that had to do particularly with COVID. We had one student who tested positive, but that was handled quickly with the Health Department and they, along with our nurses, determined that no one had close contact with that student and therefore we were able to move forward with our regular schedule. There was no interruption. Since that time, we've had another student who has had close proximity to someone who was a positive case. They are considered to be a presumptive positive at this point. They are isolated for 14 days. And again, because of the policies and procedures that we have in place, no one had close contact with that student. So we're able to move forward again. And I say those things just to help assure you and the public that we are being vigilant and we're protecting our staff and our students with everything that we know how to do. And so far, it's working very well. I think that everybody would agree with that. The students are happy to be in school. The staff are happy to see the students. There are obviously some things that probably the students would like to have a little bit differently, but they're following right in line. And I had one teacher today say, as I was walking through, she said, you know, even, now, this is a teacher talking, even with the little stinkers that we know sometimes, all we have to do is say a word to them and they settle right on down because they want to be in school.
Wow, that's awesome. That's incredible.
So I think we're doing the right thing. And I'd be open to any questions that you have for us. If I don't have the answer, somebody in the audience does.
Does any board member have questions? I'm encouraged. You know, as we said from the beginning, we understand. It's just a fluid, very fluid situation, but I'm just encouraged and pleased and thrilled to know that we're able to see kids in the classroom the way we are.
Any questions? Anyone? Anything else? Now, one of the things that we didn't talk about, if you have a copy of the calendar, it's a revised calendar. And whenever we... Now, it's my turn, Tommy.
See, one of the school board policies about phones?
No, there's not. You want my phone? Do you want my phone? Please take my phone.
I think that one used to be mine, I think.
What that member did. When we approved our last calendar, it was before we had actually gone into an alternative schedule and before some other things with construction had happened. And Toby and I sat down and we looked at where we are with the A, B schedule, the remote learning days, and developed a pattern that we hope that we can follow for the remainder of the semester. Now, this is subject to change again according to whatever happens, including weather. It's not uncommon for us to begin to have weather issues in November and December. I think that one important piece for us to note is next week, on September the 7th, it is a holiday and we're going to have two A days and then we're going to have two B days. Normally, there would be a remote learning day on Wednesday between them. We're going to take that out for next week so that we can get the instruction in that we need to. I think our teachers can handle that. They're planning very well. I don't know what else to tell you. Toby, is there anything else that we need to mention tonight from that calendar?
Teacher work day.
That would be the week of October the 4th. And we had some additional remote learning days and work days in there, which we just, we have taken out for now and just put a work day on the 7th in its place because the festival has been canceled for this year. Any questions about that?
I was going to ask about testing. Are we still going to try to get testing in before Christmas?
Testing will be, testing will be done before Christmas, Kim. I had a conversation with Sonya about that today. And we are pretty certain that actually testing may go more quickly this year than it has in the past. And the reason for that is the state at this point has removed, what are they called? NC... Help me, Trina. Yeah, the final exams. North Carolina, NCFEs, North Carolina file exam. They have removed all of those. So all that we have to technically test are the CTE final exam and also, I believe, Math 1, Math 3, and English 2 for our end of course, plus some, maybe some EOGs at the middle school because we're running semester courses there. We actually have less testing this year than we've had in a while. So testing will be that last week and maybe quicker than we have been able to accomplish in the past. Thank you, Toby. Other questions?
Anybody? Any other questions?
So in a little while, we're going to ask for your approval of that calendar so that we can have it in place and live by it. And there are several in the community who are wanting to know exactly what the week of Labor Day is going to look like. And we want to make sure that we can get that to them. If you approve this in a little bit, we'll put this on our calendar, on our website tomorrow so that everybody will have it. There have been significant changes from the North Carolina High School Athletics Association and the best person to speak to that is Neil Blankenship and he just walked in. So Neil, teach us everything that we need to know and give us a test when it's over. Pass him down.
What you're getting is a copy of the calendar for this year's sports season. As you can see, nothing starts until November 4th. And once it starts, you better hang on because it's going to be a busy time. This is only a calendar. It's not a guarantee. It's only there and that's what we hope we get to do. I do have a board meeting Wednesday night at 7:30 PM with High School Athletics Association to go over some playoffs and how to schedule games and do our scheduling. Once we get that, then we'll put schedules together. We don't even have schedules together yet. But as you can see, November 4th is cross-country and volleyball. That's a start date. Everything is seven weeks long. So right now, you get 14 games in and you get seven weeks to get them in. Now, there's practice time before that because you've got to have so many practice dates before you can start. Right now, everything is on a two-game-per-limit week. If you have bad weather, then you can go three. But there's a reason for that as you get on into the other seasons. Volleyball is in that timeframe and we felt like we needed to do an indoor sport, an outdoor sport to start us off, just so that we could prepare ourselves in the gym before basketball starts and you have bigger crowds. We still have no idea what fans are going to look like in a gym. We haven't got anything from the governor or those folks yet on that. And I'm sure that'll start coming down the pipeline as we get closer. So we don't know what that's going to look like yet either. As you can see, the first two sports there are volleyball, cross-country, November 4th, the first contest, November 16th. They don't end until January 8th. We're going to get into weather issues, as you can see, okay, for all sports. We don't have swimming and diving, so you can move on past that one. Basketball, first day of practice is December 7th. First contest is January 4th. End of season, February 19th. Now, what you see already is volleyball and basketball are going to be over top of each other. We are going to have kids who are going to play volleyball games that last week two days and then they're going to play basketball games probably two days. And that's just the way our kids are. They're just going to have to be able to do that. And we're just hoping we get a season where we get to try to figure out how to do it. Your traditional nights of Tuesday, Thursday being volleyball, Tuesday, Friday being basketball, it may not look like that. We may play a lot more games on Saturday, just so it helps our kids out where they can play the multiple sports. We are probably going to have a shortage of officials in volleyball because a lot of our officials are older and have made decisions not to call. So we are having to help them and try to figure out scheduling with their schedule conflicts of not having enough officials. So there's a lot of different issues with that. So once you get into basketball, then you see men's soccer starts January 11th. We don't have lacrosse. Its first game is January 25th. The final regular season's March 12th. So we're right there in the middle of data winter for that one. The first football practice is February 8th. The first contest is February 26th. The final regular season game is April 9th. And so what you see is, is all of a sudden now, we're probably going to be playing football and some of these sports during spring break. So my suggestion to parents is don't make plans to go anywhere over spring break because we are not going to be able to take a whole week off. It's just not going to work this year. We only have seven weeks to get things in. They've got to get in. In some schools' cases, their spring breaks are going to be over the first round of the playoffs. It just depends on where yours falls. So that could happen with that. And as you can see, basketball and football overlap. Well, there's rules in football. You have to have so many practice dates in before you can have contact, before you can play a game. So me and Coach Matt Mahan are going to work together to where the kids are going to have to come to football practice, practice for a little while, so we get to count a practice and then go do their basketball practice. So our athletes are going to be extremely busy. And then you go into March 1st for golf, tennis, soccer, and softball. And then you go, and those first contests are March 15th to the final regular season, April 30th. And then the last bit is, the final group is April 12th, the first start date for practice, the first contest, April 26th. The final regular season, June 11th. Our seniors are going to be graduating. So just, and you see wrestling is in the last... We are going to have kids playing three sports during that time. And wrestling is in the last group because it was one of the most dangerous ones we had with what they do. So we moved it all the way to the end. So therefore, that's where it's at. So that's put us in a kind of a bind. But like, for example, June 11th is their last contest that week. To get to a state championship is two more weeks later. That will be the end of June. Our goal is, we want to have playoffs. You've got to give kids a reason to play. They will be shorter. There will not be as many teams making the playoffs. So I think there's going to be 32 teams in your team sports that will make the playoffs, 16 on the East, 16 on the West. And then they'll go from there with the individuals. We'll have a lot more of this hammered out by the time Wednesday nights are with our board meeting there and we vote on some things there. And then the cheerleading invitation, if they go to competitions, May 1st. But they will also cheer during the basketball and the football season also. So as you can see, it's going to be, scheduling is going to be a nightmare. Our biggest concern right now across the state is buses. If we keep our bus numbers like they are to travel this many teams, it's going to be a headache to schedule, not to mention how many buses are we going to take. And then we're going to have to find drivers for all these buses. So that's going to be a hard thing to figure out if we stay like we are right now. Now, if it eases up as we get closer to the end, that's what we'll do. But we start... But we started off pretty light with two sports with this, just to get us a start on that. And I've been, I'm excited that we got a chance. Our kids are excited we got a chance and they're looking forward to it. And y'all talk about kids being excited, getting to see them every day in our workouts and stuff. But they're excited. They're glad to be back and doing something. Our kids have been working real hard and they're just happy to be around each other again and getting a workout and be together. Any questions on the schedule?
I wouldn't have even thought about transportation until you mentioned it. So, I mean, there's a huge potential that we're looking at having to maintain the same type of distance on an athletic bus as on a yellow bus. I wouldn't have thought of that.
And the biggest thing for me right now is finances.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, when you get into February and you're talking about football, this year, we had seven home games. In the past, when we had seven home games, that is usually around $60,000 to $80,000 that we bring in for football. You're playing in February. I don't know what our crowds are gonna look like. I don't know if we're gonna be allowed to have that many. But if it's that cold, we're probably gonna lose some fans. You know, so budgeting all this is gonna be, is the scary part for us right now. And trying to put, it's the scariest part for everybody across the state. Is trying to figure out how we're gonna handle this. Because if you have some bad games or you have some weather games and you don't get that crowd. And our biggest crowds are usually your Smoky Mountains, your Franklins, your Incas. And, you know, as they are, your Robbinsville Murphys are big crowds too. But those first early games are $15,000 gates and we're not gonna get to play them. So they're out. So, you know, I think that's a big concern for us right now.
Neil, will there be the possibility that home football games or week, football games during the week will be able to be played on Saturday?
We are looking at maybe playing Saturday day games because the sun will at least be out. But once again, we're, it's, both teams have to agree on that. And then the issue is this too. If, let's say a Friday, it snows. You cancel that game. You can't get it in Friday or Saturday. You're gonna want to play a football game on a Monday and then turn around and probably play on a Friday or Saturday that week. And two football games a week is rough. But they're all conference games except for one right now. So we're kinda in a tough situation. I will say that I've met with our coaches because our kids want to play their sports. And they want to try to play all their sports. And when the first this time came out, the kid's biggest worry was, how am I gonna play all my sports? Our coach has been told, our kids are gonna play their sports. We're gonna figure out how to make it happen. And our coaches have been working well together right now, trying to figure out how to start working on our calendar with that part of it. Once again, the issue's gonna be practicing volleyball and basketball in gym space and doing that and getting it all done. You know, so that's gonna be a hard thing there too. So it's gonna be fun.
Do you perceive possibly having to have some Saturday practices as well?
Oh, yes. Yes. To get our days in, we will for sure in football because we have to. But like, if a basketball team or a volleyball team is playing on a Monday, I would say that coach would wanna practice on a Saturday so they get a practice before they play that team. So, you know, the traditional days of Saturday and Sundays are off or spring breaks are off. Or, you know, we've always played football on Thanksgiving. You know, those things are gonna happen. Now, there's not gonna be, there's not any Christmas tournaments. We're not allowing any Christmas tournaments right now because of, we don't want big groups. Wrestling matches are probably gonna be at the most a duel or a try. And we're gonna have to work on how to do that. Cross-country meets, they may not have seven or 11 schools there. It may be a max of four. That's stuff we're gonna start looking at this week on our schedules and our calendar and stuff with the High School Athletics Association. So it's, it's gonna be a big undertaking to pull this off. And our kids are gonna have to be good communicators. And our coaches are gonna have to be good communicators. And it's gonna be fun to figure out, I know that. But, you know, on the bright side, our kids are, workouts are unbelievable right now for school. We can't get the kids to go away. And that's a good thing. We offer them Monday through Thursday and they're there. They come on the days they're not in school. And we check their temperatures and do all their stuff there. And it's been going real well. Our coaches are working extremely hard. You know, we opened up our stuff up top to all athletes. And so we've got coaches coming up and working with us so we can get our groups small enough to where we can pull it off and it's gone well.
So all of the games, meets, matches, whatever, just could be with the conference?
Well, we'll have, we will have one non-conference football game. Basketball is probably gonna be just conference. Baseball and softball, maybe it'll probably be just conference. Wrestling, they'll be able to go outside some. But it depends on how we're gonna match up with other schools from outside of here, trying to get that to match up. That's the hardest part right now we're finding, is trying to, they're trying to get their conference stuff in. We're trying to get our conference stuff in and then trying to add the extras too. The track and the cross-country could go against other people. It's gonna be a lot tougher with your team sports to do that.
I'm finding it'll be a lot of women, Chris, in the ring.
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot.
How about the activity buses? Do we have enough activity buses to, I mean, when you've got all these games going on?
No, we barely have enough right now. You know, so it is, I think we've got four that are pretty good. And I think we have five that can go. I believe that's right. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's close. But, you know, it's a...
Transportation director says five.
Five, yeah. Okay, five. But, and that's hard during the spring.
Yeah, already.
I mean, so, and you know, and you look on a football night, a varsity football game, band and cheerleading take two. We take two. There's four right there out, you know. And that's if, and now all of a sudden, you say you can't put 40 on a bus. Now we're looking at needing six.
Yes.
Can you tell us what else is for this?
There's a difficulty with using the yellow school buses when you take them off of the school route because of insurance.
They can't go outside the county.
I was thinking that you were...
Yeah, they can't go outside the county. So.
But we can rent or lease buses from other places and then I can see that being an added expense to the budget. That we're gonna have to look at.
But like I said, it's a good problem to have. And we're gonna, it's better than not playing. So we're gonna do what we can with it.
And I'm sure you're already doing this, you and your coaching staff. But I just feel like it's really important to communicate every bit of this to every potential parent out there that they are kind of hearing repeatedly. Practices, seasons, games are going to be very different. Be prepared for your life to be turned upside down.
Well, we had...
To accommodate this sporting.
We did one film session already with Joe Holt and Coach Burrow and put it out there. And then once this becomes more finalized, we're able to get calendars out. Because like I said, nothing's set yet. And so once we're able to get that out, we'll start getting it out. And like I said, none of this is in stone. And we could, they could all of a sudden, we get November 4th and they say, we're pushing back. And then what do we do if they say no fans? You know, if we get to that point and they say no fans, then we've got a decision to make. You know, so, you know, I know there's some colleges doing that. I know there's some states doing that. I think the private school world is doing that right now. So, you know, I don't know.
So with this schedule, Coach, starting in November, has anything been said about fans yet as far as?
No. We've put stuff out to the governor's office and his folks. And the last I heard, I don't even think the ACC really knows yet in our own state what their rule is on fans yet either. And I think they're set to play next week or the week after. I think September 11th's a big date. I think that's the next one. September? Okay. I know that's what we're waiting on. And I know that Q down at North Carolina High School Athletics Association, she has pushed it out to find out. Because I have a feeling that if there's no fans, that some schools will be opting out. You know, so, but, you know, I don't know. So we'll wait and see.
Well, again, thank you for all your efforts, Mr. Kim. Certainly appreciate everything that you're doing to represent our school and to be a part of the association there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, before you leave, Coach, I got an announcement the other day about you receiving either a placement or being voted into something. What was?
I'm, I've just got, I'm gonna be vice president of the North Carolina Coaches Association this year and I'll be president of the North Carolina Coaches Association the following year. So I don't know, it's gonna be fun. The clinic was canceled this year and the guy said, he said, it's your job to get it back down in Greensboro. So I don't know. We'll see how that'll go.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe we weren't supposed to announce that yet, but sorry. I just think it's important for us to recognize that Neil is on the Board of Director for the High School Athletics Association and also is now a major representative for the coaches in the state as well. We are really, really honored to have him as part of our staff.
Absolutely.
Construction update? The only reason I put that on there is because, of course, it was delayed some because of COVID, particularly in trying to get the carpet here. I believe the carpet is here now and is being placed. There are other elements that are being finalized. As I drove by today, they're painting, doing some final painting. Our intent is for all of the carpet and the flooring to be down probably the second week of September so that we can have the furniture delivered at that point. And we should be able to start getting those pieces in place as well. In a meeting recently with the county and also H and M, Bob Guerin said that he can guarantee that we'll be in on October 1st. Well, okay, maybe. We'll see. But we're closer than we were. And I'm encouraged by that. If you drive by, you'll see that most of the cement, if not all the cement's down now. And we have an agreement to get that parking redesigned. We should have the final design for that this week and I'll share it with you. And it should be paid for too. Travis has donated the money. To put down new pavement and also lights.
What else do we need, right Travis?
No, I'm just kidding. But we have been able to allocate the funding money for that as well. The other piece that I need you to know about is if you, when you drive out tonight, if there's daylight, if you'll look down to the gravel parking lot beside the baseball field, you'll see that there are more storage trailers there than there have been in the past. Tomorrow, there'll be three more. Schneider Electric is bringing in all of the equipment and all of the pieces to start the conversion of the lights. They'll start here at the high school. They'll be working at night. They'll start at about 4:00 PM and they'll work until 2:00 AM. We have a guarantee from Schneider that the staff won't even know that they've been there. And for Schneider, I believe that. They've been so good at everything that they've done. And you should have a schedule in your pack that looks something like that. You can look down through there and see when each of the different pieces are gonna be put in place. To my knowledge, everything for this performance contract should be in place and running by the end of February. That's just, to me, that is just amazing and phenomenal. I wish that we were able to get that moving a little more quickly because some of the issues that we have had out at West with their air compressors would have been a non-issue. Because it would have been taken care of. But the timing is timing and COVID has slowed that down as well. I could, you know, if you have any questions about that, I'll do my best to answer those. But you might wanna hold those until the September meeting because Graham will be here to talk us through that.
Okay.
Okay? I think that those are all of the discussion items except for one thing. And I wanted to mention this while Neil was up here. Am I doing something wrong? Okay. You didn't want to be heard anyhow, did you, Kim? We've restructured how we're gonna be paying our coaches stipends. Originally, we had said that we would pay 25% when they signed the contract, 25% when half the season was through. And then the other 50% when the entire season was accomplished. Because of the way that things are working right now, we changed that 25% when they sign. And I found out today that some contracts have not been signed yet. It's not the coaches' fault. We have to own that as a central office. And I have put plans in place so that those will be in place and signed by the end of this week. That'll be taken care of. And then the second 25% will be given to the coaches when they begin their season because they will have been participating in the pieces that lead up to that. And then they'll get the remainder of their payment at the end of their season. So that stretches it out just a little bit because of the way that we've had to schedule things. But truthfully, I don't know any other way to do it right now. Because if someone were to not be able to finish their season and we were to pay them ahead of time, we would have to ask for that money back. And that's a difficult thing to do. So we have restructured to try and take care of all the folks that are involved in extracurriculars. Just wanted to tell you all that and let you know that we're on top of that. Yes, Jerry?
Yes, I've got a question on that. That still concerns me. As a matter of fact, I'm extremely concerned. I think we're gonna lose some coaches. And in the situation we're in, we lose some of the quality coaches we've got and all of them are quality coaches, I think, right now. It's gonna be hard to replace them. It'd be almost impossible to replace them during the year. I think it's gonna hit us square in the face before the year's out. These young coaches are struggling. They depend on that coach throughout the year. This primarily involves, I think, probably the fall coaches. They used to have that spread out. So now you have a coach that's spread out or a payment scale that's spread out of $300 or $400 a month. And they're getting what should be on the average, probably $100 a month. But that hits the bottom line. I don't know what we do, but I think we're, I think we're gonna lose some coaches. Because the information I get is they're, they are really stressed out how they're gonna pay their bills. These folks, give you an example of football coaches. They work 12 months a year. I mean, they literally work 12 months a year. And on a given year, if they make $2.50 an hour, they're probably flying high. And I think it's hurting them around. I'm very concerned about it and I'm very disappointed with it because I think these are the folks that are putting a lot of extra time in for our kids and they need to be taken care of. I don't know the full answer, but I think we need to find a way. Those in particular, some of the, some of the coaches may only coach one sport. And they may not, do they get paid before, was that yearly before? Like a spring sport, was there scattered over 12 or 10 months?
Yeah, 10 months.
Oh, okay. And I know we're in a different situation, but, you know, we've had situations before where somebody may not finish the season and we have to adjust to it. But I'm real concerned about it. And I feel for these younger coaches in particular. Some of the older coaches probably, I know they have a struggle too, but they may be able to adapt better than some of the young ones that are making, not making a great deal when they start out teaching to start with. And there's several in that category, I understand. And I think it's, I don't know what Neil's heard, but I'm hearing from a number of sources, and none of them have come to me, none of them. But I'm hearing from other sources that they are really stressed out how they're gonna make payments. So I think we need to really look at that carefully or at least find some alternatives. I don't know, you had talked at one time about extra custodial duties. I don't know if that's still an option or what. But I'm almost guaranteed we're gonna lose some coaches.
And we could create positions in the custodial world and in other places for people to work as well. One of the difficulties with that is that our coaches are involved in things after school too. And so it's difficult for them to do that. And I don't, Jerry, I know that it's difficult for everybody, but I don't know a better answer right now. I would welcome an idea or ideas from folks so that we can help take care of them.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if I've got all the answers either. I'm not saying I do. But what I am saying is, and I've been there, done that. And that's tough. These folks give far beyond, there's a lot of them just give absolutely far beyond what we expect of them. I mean, it's just unbelievable the time they give for our kids. And I don't want them hurt. They're too hard to get and they're too hard to keep. You look around, we're very fortunate. Very fortunate, the folks we've got.
So what would some guidelines be that you would like to see us meet to develop a solution? Because I can work within guidelines, it's coming up with those.
Well, maybe what you could do originally is talk to the coach, to the coaches, and see how many people it's affecting, if it's hardship. And this definitely is a different year. One like we never had before, and, you know, if you need to adjust it, do whatever you need to.
It sounds like with Coach Blingship that they're all working right, I mean, together just to get those numbers down anyway. So they're putting time in now, and a lot of them probably will not be getting paid till spring. I don't know, I don't know the answer either, but I do think we should look at it.
Well, there's no good answer, because your issue is this. If you end up with a situation where, and we've had this happen before, a coach gets out, and we get stuck, especially a coach that doesn't work for the school, you get stuck. And that, and that's happened before. And then you see, and then you've got the other coach's side, because that's where I'm at, too. It, it's kinda, there's no right answer. And so then all of a sudden, you get in a situation, too, where, you know, there were counties last year who, during the COVID, they didn't pay their spring coaches, all theirs. So what do you do? And we paid ours, and I think it was right that we paid them, because you do a lot beforehand, you know. But, and like I said, I don't know if there is a right answer, you know. And, and the coaches, we notified them, I sent them an email, and we talked about it. I don't know if they put that in their mind until it hit, maybe, you know, once that first check come out, and then it hit them, you know, what they do make. And I think the issue, a lot of it is, is your coaches who coach multiple sports, it hits a little harder. Or if you're in a situation where you and your spouse both coach, and then you're talking maybe for some of them, that's three and four seasons, it could hit you a little harder then, too. Your coaches who coach three sports or two sports, you know, it hits you a little more. So I think, you know, a lot of it is, is it's something new. And like I said, I don't know the answer. I know there are, across the state, there's all kinds of different ways people do it. There's people that they don't get paid till their season's over. You know, they just make a one lump check when their season's done. I don't agree with that either, you know, but I, I don't know the answer. You know, to me, you, you either got the choice of doing it like we're doing it, where you're getting part, or you go back to the old way, one or the other. I don't know what else you do, you know. But that would take some, us talking and doing that, because I, I know Stephanie's been hit, and finance has been hit even before Stephanie with people getting stuck, you know. So, like I said, I, I think it's, it's one of them, just like we've learned in COVID, there's a lot of, you're not gonna be right either way you go. So, you know, you know, and I, and I talked to Mr. Sale before this, you know, with me. You know, I gave him my prime, a prime example was me with, with my dad. I don't know, you know, all of a sudden, something goes wrong with him in football, I'm not gonna be there. I've gotta help my mom. So, you know, I, I told him straight off the bat, "Don't even pay me yet." Because, one, I don't wanna have to pay that back. Two, there's just no guarantees, you know. But, you know, I, I think, you know, I was a prime example when I went to him about myself and my situation. So.
Even with your situation?
Yeah.
If that were to occur, I still believe we owe you that. I mean, because you and the other coaches go way beyond trying to help our kids. And they're, these coaches, I'm telling you, and I, when I say coaches, I'm talking about Van and Corus, all of them, they're all coaches. They mean so much to our kids. And if somehow something happened to your dad, let's say, in the middle of the season, I have no problem with honoring what we've committed to, because that is beyond reasonable certain situations. And that's, that's an emotional thing, that's something that you have no choice over. How many times is that gonna happen with the coach? You know, it's, it's rare. So I don't see that that's a problem. I think we still are committed to doing that because of the time and the effort and the care you put into our kids. Same with the teacher.
Thank you. I wouldn't feel good about it, but thank you.
Well, I would. I would, because it's not your, it is nothing that you created.
Like I said, I, some of this stuff, I, I don't understand a lot of it. I don't, you know, and it's, it's just, this, this situation with what we've gone through this year has put us in a whole different light. You know, so. Because, I mean, really, our, and, and I think it kinda hits the football coaches a little more because most of my football coaches coach multiple sports. When you look at your multiple sport coaches, a lot of them are your multiple sport coaches. You know, Coach Roper coaches, you know, two, three, and then, you know, but most of my coaches do coach multiple sports. But, you know.
What would be, would it work to maybe do 50% and then 50%?
We can do that, or we could also.
That would be, that would balance out pretty close, wouldn't it?
We could also go to a monthly payment, and if, if a coach discontinues, then we stop paying.
Right.
Or if the season is completely halted? I, I mean, I, I, I don't know.
I think that if, that's really difficult, Mallory.
Yeah.
I see both sides of that one. Because there's, there's another side for me to think about, and as much as I do honor and respect the effort that coaches are giving, I also look at the fact that it is possible, if we were to be placed into a Plan C, that we're gonna have custodians, we're gonna have bus drivers, and we're gonna have teacher assistants that may not have work. And are we going to expect ourselves to continue to pay them if there's not work?
If we did it monthly, an advantage to that would be, if we had to go to Plan C, then they just don't get paid. You know, that, you know, you, you don't have to ask for it back, or whatever.
When you're saying monthly, though, are you like saying monthly throughout their season? Are you saying monthly for like the 10 months now?
See, even that gets tricky.
The problem with saying season is the fact that the seasons have been shifted so far in advance.
Seasons are not the same right now.
That's really what's creating the problem right now. If we had been able to have regular seasonal play, our coaches wouldn't be feeling just like they are right now.
But the flip side of that is,
Some of them.
If I can process this out the way it's rolling in my head is, so if we went back to that 10-month monthly payment, and, and just say, let's just say, things were normal up until basketball season, in a normal year, everything's rolling along, all along, all along, that basketball coach is getting paid his, or her, basketball supplement
Before.
From August 1st up until, and so now we're in January, and basketball gets knocked down.
Right.
So in my way of thinking, in a normal year, and I realize they're not normal, that person has been paid for, for services that they didn't complete, and then what do you do? I mean, it's, it's a mess, it's hard to know what's going to happen.
Well, I think, too, though, that's, when you look at a supplement, supplement, there are so many things that go on before a season starts. You know, whether it's getting your place ready, or it's whether the preseason stuff that you do and preparing. So you're getting paid for stuff beforehand, too, you know. So, you know, just like our spring coaches, you know, some of them got one game, some of them got two games in. There was a lot of work that went into it before that.
Right.
You know, so, you know, once you get into games, that's the fun part, that's the easy part. You know, the beforehand's the hard part. You know, but, you know, I, I wanna do what's right for our coaches, one, because they do work hard. I mean, I haven't had to, our workouts up here after school, they're here. And that's the hard part, you know, what, what else can they do? You know, it's hard for them to do the custodian work when they're here with me until 4:30, you know, so.
Go ahead, Ken.
No, I was gonna say, I mean, everybody wants it to be fair. So I, you know, I don't know if there's a way for y'all to talk again and try to figure that, what's that balancing between what's fair to the coaches versus what's fair to the system?
I, I really think that the only way to be fair on this is to pay monthly. And if a coach disassociates, then we stop paying. I don't know any other way to work it. And to, and to take care of the concerns that Jerry was expressing right now about coaches relying on this to help meet their needs during the months, because I understand that. And then I think that there has to be a decision, and if that needs to come from us, we can, it can, but there needs to be a decision. If a season is canceled, do we continue to pay?
I don't think we continue to pay.
It's a, to me, it's a philosophical question.
Let's see, I don't have a problem with that. If, right now, for example, some, the two fall sports, particularly volleyball and football, they've been practicing since July, 1st of July. So what we pay them now, if we're paying them monthly through the fall, they're earning it. And then if we get into November and they cancel everything, then we'd have, let them know, you know, we, we may have to stop it, if we don't have any spring sports at all. There's no perfect example, but I'd rather us err on the side of taking care of our people.
I can, I can put a schedule together for that, and we can put that in place right away. And that'll help out the fall coaches. And, you know, the next question is, is this just gonna be for fall, or are we also gonna do it for the spring? And it seems to me, if you're gonna do it for one, you do it for all.
I don't, I think you gotta do it for all if you're gonna do it. I do, I mean, I don't think you can do it.
We're talking about fair.
Yeah. I think you do one, you do them all. I mean, if it's one, trying to keep up with that, I don't wanna tell Stephanie that she has to do that.
Yeah, Stephanie, Stephanie will do whatever we need her to.
But that would be, that'd be tough.
How, what about the ones which they returned up to Princeton already?
We have, well.
There's only been two or three that we, that we've really stepped into that fully, correct, Tommy? So we're really at a pretty good place where we can make that happen and move forward. Yes, sir.
Would, do you mind if I come to the podium, just because if this is streaming, they won't be able to hear you.
Oh, you can hear him.
Having been a former three-sport coach, I, I get it. Because that was probably a truck payment, is what mine was, more or less. It's out on paper how I drive around, you know. I understand, and my heart goes out to them, but our thing is, is, okay, we don't wanna have to ask anybody for money back. You know? So if we could kinda mail the two plans together and do the 25, 2550 as a means of figuring out a pro rate for each one of those sports, to begin paying it now, and then say, "Okay, well, this is how much we actually got done, so how much of that, all right?" You see, if you see what I'm saying, like, if they completed their track season. So we knew we owed that much, so we'd take that much off from those months. And then we say, "Okay, we got this much of football done, but that's all we got, so where are we at with our installments?" And it may mean that we owe some people some money for the ones that are coaching multiple sports, and it may be that, that we don't owe anybody anything, and we have to just drop it. The question is, from our side of the house, is if it gets to the point where we've been paying somebody for football from the 1st to Septen, from the 1st of August to the 1st of September, however we wanna look at it, all the way till the day before they start the season, boom, it's done. And that's gonna be really late this year. You know, I mean, by, because spring sports traditionally start the week of February the 14th. That's when we start baseball practice, most of the time. So the question is, if we've already paid them three-quarters of what they would have earned, are we gonna ask them to pay us money back? Simple as that. Because if we're not gonna ask that, then there's no problem with the, with the 10-monthly installments. We just do what we have to do, like we've always done. But the question remains about where our heart and where our minds is, are, I should say, where our hearts and minds are, about that process. Do I know how much work goes into that? Yep, that baseball field doesn't mow itself. I bet I've mowed it 2,000 times, and I know that that has value. And I'm saying that from being a former coach, but we have to make our mind up about which way that we're gonna spend it. I understand both sides of the argument, because you have to try to set yourself on both sides of it. But I know there's a lot that goes into it, and I'm fine with any of it. But that's where we're gonna need the guidance from you guys about how, that you want us to proceed in my opinion. But we could use that pro rate, and I can figure out, I can figure that, I can do a spreadsheet, be done in 30 minutes, and we'll figure it out.
He's the spreadsheet king now.
Well, you guys just worked it out and did what, whatever needs to be done.
Well, that's wide open.
If we didn't trust you, you wouldn't be where you are.
Well, yeah, it goes to fairness, and, and I'm, you're fair, you're fair, and I'm, he's fair. I mean, we always err on the side of the staff, but, I mean, that's just, I don't know. I don't fully understand it as far as, I mean, I get the 10-month thing, but otherwise, it's a little confusing to me. I don't, it's not doing it, I don't.
So, bottom line, do you, as a group, want us to prorate across the year so that they are receiving monthly installments to help them out? Or do you want us to prorate in a larger way? Or do you care? I don't know how to say it anymore tactfully than that.
Well, why don't you figure out the plans, and, and, you know, maybe you can email them to us, and.
Okay, is that what you want me to do?
No, I think.
I, yeah, I'd be in favor of that. I, I think one other step I put in that, I mean, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow, is have Neil maybe talk to some of the staff and just see how they feel, how they would look at different plans, and maybe what they, what their needs are. And let's just, let's include their voice in it, too, because I just don't want them, I don't wanna lose any of it.
And that, and that's, that's, did you hear what Neil just said, Jerry? And I'm not trying to be one of those stinkers I was talking to about a minute ago. Neil said, "They haven't come to him and said anything."
Haven't they? They need to, because I know Neil, he'll listen to them, they need to. They're not coming to me. Other people have, telling me the horror story, you know, their financial story, not just one, but.
I had one come to me today, Jerry, and, and it was, and that's the reason I'm bringing it up. I had one come to me and say, "If, if we don't do something, that it's gonna do, it's gonna create a difficulty for his family." But I found out that he hadn't signed his contract yet, and it's not his fault, so he's gotten zero out of it. And I've got that fixed. We'll take care of him. Neil and I will have a conversation, and we'll have a conversation with coaches.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll come, we'll bring a plan to you. And what we will do is we will put this, have this in place and ready to go at the September board meeting. We'll share the plans with you so that you can look at it. But, but we have to be open with what we're doing also.
Is that a plan to be approved, or is that?
You don't have to approve it, but it's nice to be working on the same page.
Can I get that? I mean, but, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's part of this, that my, my boss is, that's what we're doing inside, like that.
And I'm, I'm good with that, but I will share it with you, and I will look for your heads nods.
Well, and it doesn't put the, the pressure all on you and your staff, if we, if we support what you do.
It helps.
I'm not saying not to support, I'm just, I don't, you know, it's a decision, I think, that.
Well, put, I wanted to put that on the table today, go have a conversation, okay? I hope that was appropriate, I don't know. What are we, what's next? I believe that that's all of the discussion, unless there's something else that you all see that I've missed, or we've missed.
I will make one more comment on what you said about the performance contract. I'm just gonna say this from, from an emotional viewpoint from being here so long. There's a, a great deal of pride swells to me when I drive up and see what's been accomplished out there. I think it is absolutely becoming a swing county, what this new school entrance, and what this new school, it really is a new school, what it's gonna look like. And I am so proud for our kids and our county. I just wanna say that, because it, I feel it every time I go by that neighborhood, so.
I agree with you, Jerry, there's a sense of pride when you walk through the building, and the excitement that, that these kids are, wanna get to experience that. At the same time, when I walk into some of the other places, and they're struggling to get air conditioning. At the same time, when I walk into some of the other places, and they're struggling to get air conditioning, that breaks my heart just as much as I have pride.
Absolutely.
Y'all, I hope you know you've got my commitment to fix that. Um, we have engineers coming in to look at the middle school, because we're still struggling on that third, that third hall, that eighth-grade hall. We've replaced a compressor, the compressor was bad. We've taken it out, we've got a new compressor coming tomorrow. And we're, we're gonna fix that too. But it'll, it comes in stages. We can't afford all of it at one time, so... There's a lot of good things happening, but there's a lot of, a lot of road to travel yet, and we'll get, we'll get the trip made.
When does Snyder start on that?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Actually, they brought their stuff in today. Tomorrow and the next day, they're gonna be bringing in equipment and more, more materials, and they'll probably start working about Wednesday evening or Thursday evening.
Good.
Anything else? Action items, and I would like to recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the revised calendar for the fall as it was presented to you just a little while ago.
Do I have a motion to approve the calendars printed?
Go move.
I believe we got a motion from Mr. Kenny and a second for Kim, and Travis, a whole bunch of people. All in, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the calendar, raise your hand. That was unanimous?
Several weeks ago, we had conversation about students moving into the area and being on Plan C rather than face-to-face. We had a general agreement about how that was going to work. I spoke with Chris Campbell in the past week, and he said that it would be a good idea for us to go beyond a general agreement on that, which is what we were talking about a few minutes ago, Kim, and move to an actual vote. And so I want to present this to you tonight for your approval and vote, or if you want to amend it, then you absolutely have that right. So until further notice, only residents of Swain County will be approved for enrollment, and all newly enrolled students will be placed in Plan C, Swain Virtual. And that's what we have been intending to do. I think that's the simplest and easiest statement that we can make. Do you, uh, so we would need probably to follow Robert's rules with, with a motion and second, or else let that die, and then have discussion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? So I want it to be clear that I'm understanding this correctly. Until further notice, only residents of Swain County will be approved for enrollment, and all newly enrolled students will be placed in Plan C, Swain Virtual. Do we need to clarify that? Like, even people who have moved in and they've taken up residence here, but because they moved in after the beginning of the year, do you see what I'm saying? I just want to make sure that that's clear, that that's clearly communicated in ways that's stated, and I have a tendency to overthink things sometimes.
That would be the, the newly enrolled students.
Right. But in my mind, I'm, if I were, I'm afraid people would read this and think, well, I moved here, I'm a resident. You know, and I'm probably just splitting hairs on that.
And if you want to, if you want to clarify the wording in that mailing, I asked you to do that. To me, because it says, um, only residents, even if a person has moved from out of town, out of county, and is now living in Swain County, it applies to them, because they are a resident of the county. Now, I may miss, be misunderstanding what you're saying.
I want to make sure I'm understanding the intent.
For anybody who enrolled from now, now on.
Regardless of if they moved into the county or not, they are Plan C.
But they have to live in Swain County. We're not taking people out of county because of the COVID. But once, once they move into Swain County, they can only be in Plan C.
See, I told you, I overthink things sometimes, or underthink them perhaps.
And, and please understand that at the end of the state of emergency, we will rescind this and go back to the regular operational processes. And any, anyone who has been denied entrance into Swain County schools because they don't live in Swain County will then be given an opportunity to enroll in Swain County schools, just like Almond. This is, this is a, just a preemptive move to protect our community, that's all.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm good with it. Okay, it's clear then. Thanks, Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the Plan C requirement? Raise your hand. That was unanimous?
Um, I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation/retirement of Dora May as art teacher at Swain High School effective August thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion with regret.
I'll second with regret.
That's the laws, but...
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Kevin Almond as gear-up coordinator effective August thirty-first, twenty-twenty. I know you all love Sam Patilla, but he stole Kevin Almond.
Uh-oh.
You just remember that the next time you see him. And I hope Sam's watching. I love you, brother.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, please. That was unanimous?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the retirement/resignation of John Hagler as custodian at Swain High School effective August thirty-first, twenty-twenty. You should have his resignation letter there with you, and it probably was hand-delivered to you today.
Yeah, it was. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Whitney Baldwin as interim teacher at Swain West Elementary effective August tenth, twenty-twenty. That's an interim position that will run through the end of this year, and that is all.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Mary F. Sherrill as custodian at Swain High School effective August tenth, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
Go move.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Gray Lakey as interim teacher at Swain Middle School effective August tenth, twenty-twenty. Let me explain that one to you just a little bit. Gray has been working as a media assistant at the middle school, um, in the media center there, for the past couple of years. And Cindy Arch has been diagnosed with cancer, and is, has undergone surgery and is undergoing treatment. And so while she is away, she has not requested a leave of absence at this point, we're able to do this with some sick leave. We need to put somebody in that classroom, and so since Gray already had a journalism degree and has been part of the school system, we ask if she would be willing to move into that and then transition into, into the certification that she'll need to continue there. And she has agreed to do that. So that's where that position came from.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Um, the, the next, the following pieces you're going to find are, are part-time or COVID-related. I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education employ Patrick R. Wilson as a CNA at Bright Adventures Pre-K effective August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Is that a full-time position, Mr. Dills? Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Go move.
First, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, please. That was unanimous?
Um, we told you some time ago that we're gonna be looking at four additional part-time custodians to help with some of the needs because of, of our COVID constraints right now. So these are the four, plus one, and I'll explain why. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Joe Hagler as part-time custodian at Swain East Elementary effective September first, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Samantha James as part-time custodian at Swain West Elementary effective September first, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Kim, what's... Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. That was unanimous?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Cameron Vanes as part-time custodian at Swain High School effective September first, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, please.
A side note on Cameron, he'll be working as custodian, but he's also going to school two days a week at, at Southwestern. And we're going to work around that schedule in a way that we can to help him continue to move forward. He's gonna graduate there with a, a degree in mechatronics.
Yay!
And so this is just another effort for us to employ and support one of our own.
That's great.
I, I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ David Barker as part-time custodian at Swain East Elementary effective September first, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. That was unanimous?
And now, you'll see, you're gonna see a fifth custodian. We said four, but the reason that we're hiring five part-time is because, uh, Joe Hagler has resigned, retired. We moved someone from East Elementary, we transferred them. Who was that, sir? Um, and so we have two positions basically at East. And so what we will do is, we will hire these part-time, we believe that we can get all of the work done with that. And then at the end of the year, we'll look at how they have done and perhaps be able to offer them, at least one of them, some full-time work. We also have to remember that we have added over thirty thousand square feet of space at the high school, and that doesn't clean itself. Okay? So even though it costs to build, it will often cost more to maintain. Okay? So I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Alicia Williamson as part-time custodian at Swain Middle School effective September first, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous?
Now, I need to add one more that we, we located and we need for you to act on. I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Ronnie Bowers as a bus driver effective August eleventh, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. That was unanimous?
Now, Tommy, we, we spoke about the transfer of Doug. Were there any other transfers that I need to make, that the board be aware of? I thought that was the only one. Okay. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for September the fourteenth. And as I said, Graham Lewis will be here to talk to us, and then we'll take our final action on the stockings that we've been talking about. So put that on your calendar. Hopefully, we'll be back at the central office building. Uh, we'll make a decision more, more quickly about that, though, if we cannot, okay? Now, I believe that we have one more, one more item on the agenda, unless there's something else, more information that anyone needs to share tonight. No? Mr. Gibson, are you here, sir? Would you come on down to the, to the microphone? Mr. Gibson was with us at the, I believe, the last meeting or the meeting before that, with some, a desire for more information, and he contacted us via email to be placed on the agenda, to continue the conversation. Uh, I've, I've asked Mr. Gibson a couple of times, are we going to be, uh, talking about people or your daughter or in, a person by name tonight?
Uh, no, I do not believe so.
Okay. With that knowledge, I don't know that it would be appropriate for us to go into closed session. I think that it would need, need to just be part of our open session, okay? So, Mr. Gibson, with Ms. Burns' direction, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, whenever I exchanged emails with you, would you be able to explain the policy of the Swain County Public School to me?
Which policy, Mr. Gibson?
Uh, it says, uh, the one that was at the bottom of the email.
Yeah, I would need to look at that, sir. You're talking about at the bottom of the email where it says, "It is the policy of the Swain County Public Schools that all operations will be performed without regard to race, age, religion, color, national origin, gender, marital, pregnant status, or disability"? Is that particular?
Yeah, I was just curious, what, what that actually means?
That means that we, that we will show no preference in our decision-making and in our work based on a person's, I suppose that you could say, inalienable rights. That basically comes out of the Constitution.
Okay.
Um, and that is a, a statement that is expected for all public service organizations.
All right. Uh, so I would assume that, like, nothing would be, like, fringed upon as far as, like, alienating people or anything along those lines, correct?
Um, as, as long as it is operating within the guidance of the regulations that we are given by the government, that would be true, sir, yes.
Okay. Um, so how does the operations work with the school board versus, like, the school? So when I went into the parent-teacher conference, um, at the beginning, when I went into the school building, you know, masks were required.
Yes.
But they were unable to provide me with a mask. And they said they were out.
Okay.
This was prior to school being open.
Yes.
The very first day of orientations at eleven o'clock. So luckily, I had a mask in the truck, so I was able to provide one. But if the requirements are that, shouldn't the schools have the proper equipment to be able to supply that instead of turning people away from entering a building?
Absolutely, Mr. Gibson. And if that happened to you, all that I can do is tell you that I apologize, that there was not one there. The masks were in storage at that time, they had been provided by the state, and they may not have been distributed at that point in time. I don't know.
All right.
Okay?
So with regards to a couple of the questions I had prior in regards to, um, the remote learning, my daughter, she is in kindergarten. So the workload is an hour a day, three times a week for that.
Yes.
Her birthday wasn't on Monday, or Tuesday, so we missed school on Monday due to her birthday.
Yes.
As to be provided the, uh, classwork, uh, work that she had missed so she could stay up to the topic.
Yes.
My daughter was able to complete all work provided, so that would've been a total of four days, three from remote and one from in-class.
Yes.
She completed it all in an hour and a half.
Okay.
So I do not believe that the hour of work for remote learning is acceptable. When I asked other teachers or other individuals their opinions, their, their response was that due to solidarity, that is what the school board and North Carolina has said, this is what is acceptable. Which I can understand that response, because it is, you know, solidarity across the field. So with that being said, how does the... With the whole school going back to two days and three days remote learning?
Yes.
When I asked the question that the reason why we are doing remote learning is because of the governor's, um, man, or mandate... is because of the governor's man, or mandate
Mandate.
For us not to go to that.
Mm-hmm.
With that being said, if it is being done for political reasons, would that not fall underneath the description, please?
If it were, if it were being accomplished for political reasons, perhaps that's true. But what we do, what I do as a school system, is not based on politics, it's based on regulation.
I agree. So whenever I was speaking with her teacher, she said that, you know, that's a conversation above her pay grade and all that through the different people that I've spoke to. So with that being said, do you guys answer to the governor or do you answer to, like, what is the chain of command? Because when I was speaking at the school, they told me that their number one concern was my daughter's health and of all children's health.
Yes.
And I agree with that and I appreciate it. But as the school, education should be priority.
Yes.
The health department should be in charge of the health. Y'all should work hand in hand, not one hand reaching over the other. So I didn't know if the ma, mandate from the governor is like, how does that affect your chain of command if the health department said, you're fine as long as you do this? And if, as soon as it's over, that we'll go back to normal.
If, if you don't mind, we have our health director here, Ms. Cochran. And I, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I'm not sure that you came, you were in at the beginning when she was speaking. And one of the things that Ms. Cochran was very eloquent at stating is how well our school system and the health department is working hand in hand. And the health department, and again, I don't want to overspeak, Ms. Cochran, but the health department has mandates that they have to follow. We are all following mandates that come straight down from the governor. At this point. And so as a system, in your opinion, are we following all of the health department mandates? And part of the mandate states that we cannot have school in session at 100% enrollment. That is one of the mandates from the governor through the health department to each individual school system.
Okay.
So the only way we can have any face-to-face instruction, the only way we can have our students that we love dearly sitting in a chair is if we follow these mandates as laid out by the health department. And that, the health department mandate says that we have to be able to maintain this at a minimum of six feet of social distancing between the desks as they're going down the hall, eliminate, you know, all the things that we have worked so diligently to eliminate. So we are working in step by step with our health department to do exactly what we're doing in an effort to provide as much face-to-face instruction as we can for every student whose family has chosen to do that with the understanding that for those students who are in Plan B, as your daughter is, they're, they're getting their face-to-face instruction two days a week. And then the remote instruction is simply, I shouldn't say simply, but the remote instruction is designed to supplement and support the learning that they got in the two days of classroom. It, it's working together to kind of build those foundations for our students. So the remote part, and again, somebody jump in and save me if I'm overspeaking or, or not explaining it correctly, Mr. Sutton, Mr. Turnerfield. The remote part of your daughter's learning is not designed to provide her seven hours of instruction on her days away from school. It's designed to just reemphasize the learning that she has been, that gotten, the learning that she got in, in her two days in the classroom. And right now, you know, we, we feel good about that process because we feel like children who are participating in our face-to-face instruction, because the classroom size is so small.
Yes.
Those children are getting a lot of one-on-one, face-to-face time with a classroom teacher that they wouldn't be getting if we, if our doors were fully open and we had 18 kindergarten children in your daughter's classroom. And the teacher is focusing on teaching and putting out fires and teaching and putting out fires. So now that we have these smaller class sizes, again, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, we, we believe that they're getting a more concentrated education on their two days there than they would if it was spread out over five days and their classroom was full. So does that?
So two days, so two days of a smaller class is sufficient than a five-day class at regular capacity?
It's not sufficient, but we're in an emergency situation, so it surpasses.
It's, it's, it's the most, it is not the best that we can offer. If we had our students in class five days a week, we would be able to offer our best. But it is the best that we can offer, given the restrictions that we have been handed.
Okay.
Now, and, and one of the, I want to go back to something that you asked a few minutes ago, or you were saying it a few minutes ago, with the hour limit for remote instruction. The reason that we have done that is at the recommendation of some other organizations, including the Friday Institute out of, out of Raleigh, who works with NC State. And they've done fairly extensive research in the world of technology and the interaction of students. And because a lot of what we are providing has to be technological in order to get the best opportunity. But Brandon, wasn't there, wasn't there also another organization that we relied on for that guidance?
National Board Certification. National Board Organization really sets them their guidance off of for a amount of time, uh, for springtime and the halftime, work time.
So we didn't just snatch that number out of the air?
Well, yeah, I got that.
And, and, and as, as the students progress in age, Daniel, the amount of time that they are expected to be in tune with their instruction every day increases to the point where they get to high school, we're expecting at least four hours. And for students that are in more advanced courses, six hours. And for a kindergarten student, that's way too much.
Okay.
Because it's just too much for their mind at that time.
All right.
Could I add something to that, just for your information? Let me take this off with you. Uh, I don't know about the kindergarten level, but I know I have a granddaughter who's in the eighth grade, middle school, and she's in Plan B. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday on the remote, I think she's spending something, we're around four hours a day completing all of her work. So that workload gets harder as the student's able to handle it by herself. I mean, she does it by herself. So I was pleased that she would have to do that much work. That's a lot of work when you're by yourself and not have a teacher there with you to help you and all that. So I was very comfortable with that. And that, I was very pleased that, that they were getting that much done. That's just a side note.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mr. Gibson?
No, I guess not.
And, and Daniel, listen, anytime that you, you have a concern, you have my phone number and you have my email. All you have to do is reach out and I'd be happy to speak with you at any point and try to clear things up. I mean, I just, I want to brag on you for just a minute, though, because I think the real reason that you're here tonight is because you want what's best for your daughter.
Absolutely.
And, and so as a parent, you're fighting for everything that you can get to, to help her have the education that you would like for her to have. And buddy, I appreciate that. Thank you so much, because your daughter's going to go a long way with a dad like you.
I'm sure y'all see a lot of me.
That's fine. That's absolutely fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Ms. Burns, I think that that pretty much ends everything. If I could have one moment to make one statement and then end with that. A few minutes ago, I made a statement about if we were to go to Plan C, it, it might affect how much work we have for people. And I, I don't want anyone who is working for our staff to be concerned about that. I think that we have proven throughout the past six or eight months that we will do everything to employ everyone in every way that we can. I can just see that if the legislature doesn't take some action on this Wednesday to free up some funding, particularly in transportation and other areas, that it could press us really, really hard if we have to shut anything down at this point. So if you have any connection with our, our local legislators and you could reach out and, and speak with them and ask for them to give us some, some support, some freedom in transportation spending. And also, it is incredibly important that they allow us to have some flexibility in our average daily membership numbers. Because if they don't, it's going to impact our funding for teachers and assistants and support staff. And I believe, I believe that they want to do, I choose to believe that they want to do what is right. I know they have constraints. But sometimes it takes people like you and like our public to reach out and say, this is important. So would you please do that? So I want to go back, Ms. Burns, and say, I don't want anybody worrying.
Exactly.
We've got their back. But if we don't get some support, it's going to make our job even more difficult. Okay?
Mark, did I not read something today from the National School Board, or State School Board Association? Those are the very items they're going to take up.
Yes.
This next week, isn't it?
Um, the state.
For the short session?
They're going to look at that, actually, some of those actions, some of those points this week. State School Board has sent out some, some surveys to us that I filled out as have some of the, the state education associations, like the principals and, and superintendents. So, yeah, they're going to be talking about that. And we have advocates in Raleigh for that. But the best advocate is the, is the individual on the phone.
Can you get some talking points?
Be happy to. I'll work on that in the morning.
Have you got Mr. Corbin's number?
Pardon me?
Could you send me Mr. Corbin's number?
I can give it to you right now. Yes, sir.
I mean, he, he is a Florida school, so.
And, you know, Mr. Corbin is not ours.
Right.
At the moment. But he will be, probably, in December. So if he would be willing to listen to us, Jim Davis and also Joe Sam. You know? So, reach out to him. Okay? Thank you for that point, privilege, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. No one has anything else? A motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Oh, I made the motion, you seconded it. All in favor? Raise your hand, that was unanimous?
Thank you all.